Good evening.
What's six hundred?
This, for the council members, this is where we start the meeting. What a crowd, great bunch. Handsome young men and women. George, hi. And Adam? Well, this is where we start out. We, in every meeting, fifteen minutes prior to the official opening of our regular city council meeting, we allow open mic. You would come up, we'd like to know at least your name, and you can talk. We've got three to five minutes, depending whether I find it interesting or not. I'm just joking, just joking. But I think this evening, could we start out maybe with the, is it the Boy Scouts of America, the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts? Ashley, could you jump in here?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we've invited the Cub Scout troop 519 and 520 to come and address city council. They have questions prepared for us as part of their requirements for their citizenship, and they're Cub Scouts. We're so proud of them and also their leaders. We have letters to honor them as well for the hours of service that they give to raise these boys into excellent men, so...
That's great. So the questions will go to Jim Meisner? Sorry, no, I'm just kidding. Could we have, come on up, and we'd like to have your name if you will, and ask a question?
My name is Elijah Michael Medina. I live in Lincoln Park. My question today is, what do you perceive as the most important concern facing the youth of Canyon City? And what can I do as a youth to strengthen our community?
Okay, council members?
Well, first of all, we want to thank you for coming here. State that question again.
What do you perceive is the most important concerns facing the youth of Canyon City? And what can I, as a youth, do to strengthen our community?
I think the most important concerns that our youth need to address currently would be, one, to remain drug-free, and two, to remain or to get involved in your community. Those are two things you really need to concentrate on. And I think as we look at issues in our society, they're related to drug use, and they're related to people not being involved.
Yeah, like, so I'm curious, what can I do in my community to help people not to use drugs?
You can participate in whatever drug programs are available at the school. The DARE program that we knew... Did they ever have DARE at school when you were still there, when you were there?
Uh, no.
They're looking at maybe having another program that's similar to the DARE program, that is a program that encourages youth to do things other than use drugs, and to be able to just say no to drugs. One of the things that you can do is always be a leader. If you see something that's wrong, have the courage to step forward and say, "That's wrong," and try to correct it. And that applies to anything. Kids you play with at recess, you're walking down the street, you're in the grocery store, anytime you see something that's wrong or inappropriate, have the courage to step forward and say, "That's not right."
What things can I, like, participate in the community that are for kids?
Elijah, there's a lot of things that you can do with the kids. For example, the Boys and Girls Club have talked about talking to city council about not allowing smoking within twenty-five feet of parks. And so that's something that would be positive. There are also youth prevention programs that would love participation of kids that do activities and education to help children make good choices about drugs and not using drugs. And they love to have peers, because the most important thing is that kids your age hear those messages from their friends, like you.
For your time.
Thank you. Next?
My name is Ammon Cash. What would you say the most, uh, the biggest concern, uh, is today?
Aside from our current political choices?
You're on TV, Scott, so I'll tell you that. The most important issues today, is that what you're talking about?
Uh, yeah.
I think it's in leadership. I think that oftentimes, people, children especially, ought to see that and be involved with leadership. That means that if you maybe want to come to city council meetings or be involved in activities such as general government or the Public Works Committee, hear what's actually going on, to check the website, and the information is on that, and read the material, and ask questions about it. Oftentimes, you'll find things that you didn't know about. I hear oftentimes in the community that they didn't hear about things, and that's often because they just didn't really watch to see where they're at. That's what a leader does, and they guide people, and they also give the information to their friends, and of course, to your scout and Cub Scout troop.
You.
You're welcome. Anyone else? So...
Do you have any other comments from our Cub Scouts? I know I see some Boy Scouts out there as well, who need to talk to city council to get their merit badge requirements.
And so my question today is, like, what can we do to fix the roads? Because we got a new road on Oak Creek Grade, I think. And, like, my little brother, he was really excited, because we had a nice new road, and it was smooth, and we were driving on it. And I was just wondering what we could do.
Is this a setup, Kyle? No, I'm kidding. Well, we have shovels, we can do potholes. Scott, go ahead.
I was gonna say, Kyle, right? All right. Talk to your friends, so that they bug their parents about fixing the roads, because that's the only way that we're gonna get this done, right? Is it the community as a whole? And unfortunately, you can't vote, so what do you have to do? Convince your parents. They're probably already voting yes, so talk to your friends' parents.
That's, and to be specific, that's voting yes on number two A.
Yes, yes.
That's the best way to take care of the accumulated problem that we had in our town, is those streets, and it's a pass-through. Every dollar that goes in will be spent on repairing the streets, and you'll have those smooth streets. That's kind of a 143 that goes out to Oak Creek Grade, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, good road, so...
Yeah, when you're riding in the car, every time you go, whoop, go. You know, if we fixed these streets, that wouldn't happen, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If we don't have any more children who want to come and talk, I would like to invite their leaders to come up, if that's okay.
Sure. The leaders, could you lead?
Do you have any more questions from kids? Okay, come on up, Nathan.
Hello, my name is Nathan Liddell. I live in Penrose, Colorado. So how much money from the city is put into public schools?
Public schools are funded from various sources, but the main source is real estate taxes that come off properties. They're all through the mill levy, so the town isn't responsible, doesn't really fund schools, as you get funded from the county and from the state mostly. Is that correct? Scott?
But we should add, the taxpayers of Canyon City pay their fair share of school taxes, as do all other citizens of Fremont County. So it comes from tax money, property tax money, both in the city and outside the city.
And isn't it true that the largest single component of our property tax is the school tax?
That is correct.
Yes. It's, yeah, I think it's something like three-quarters of it goes to schools. So everybody who owns a house or a piece of property in Canyon City, when they pay their taxes every year, a large part of the taxes they pay goes to supporting the schools here in town?
The city and the county, the whole county. It's about eighty percent of your tax bill. Understand?
Oh, taxes pay the public schools?
Yes.
Property taxes.
Property taxes, it's collected. Okay? Do you understand what taxes are? You will.
It's your parents.
Yes, your parents. That, the collected by the government paid for schools and for streets and things like that, that's what taxes are. We've cut free out a long time ago. Okay?
I think we should add, things aren't going to happen unless people do pay taxes. And that's been that way forever in the United States of America. When we talk streets, as we did a few minutes ago, streets aren't going to be repaired unless taxes are raised a little bit to cover that large, large cost. So the taxpayers keep government running, and government provides to the citizens the things they need.
Is that it, Nathan? Okay, thank you. Any of the leaders would like to step up, so we could ask questions, or you could ask us questions?
Good evening, and my name is Alan Stark. I was born and raised here in Canyon City for the last thirty-five years. I've lived here, and I served my country, went overseas, came back disabled, at a hundred percent disability. Would I ask you, what options are there in our community that I can do?
In volunteer mode? Sure. Oftentimes, you can attend meetings. There's Boys and Girls Club, there's the Boy Scouts, there's activities that, like the Blossom Festival, oftentimes, they are looking for people. Fremont, the Fremont Foundation that puts on certain things, there's Whitewater, there's a lot of activities, if that's what you're talking about, that you can get involved in. Or just give us your name, we can keep you busy.
Well, that's fine. I am volunteering for the Canyon City Rec. District. I do do that. I've been doing that for eight years. I'm also helping the Boy Scouts of America as well, volunteering my time there. I just want to find other activities I can do within the community to keep myself busy, because I cannot, I'm unemployable at this point.
I was gonna say, Fremont Adventure Recreation is always looking for additional volunteers. And currently, their focus is building trail infrastructure within Fremont County, raising money to do that, so that might be something you want to reach out.
And the other question is about the Eagle Scouts. We have some Eagle Scouts coming up. Is there any projects that I could get focused with to help them with their Eagle projects?
Mr. Hor, or Mr. Stark? Jim Hor at the Park and Rec. District is really awesome with working with Eagle Scouts. He has a whole list of projects in the community that need to be done. Recently, Caleb Usiti from troop 520 did a project for one of the new trails that's getting built. And two of my sons also did their Eagle Scout projects through him, so they're very familiar with the process and excellent to work with.
All my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here are the questions. Could we have, Ashley, could you do the letters then?
Well, sure. Mickey Wells, can you come up, and all of the Cub Scout leaders, please come up? And Mickey, just give a brief description of what you do. Mickey works by day for city, on behalf of our citizens, and by night, she is organizing these troops and helping them in her volunteer work in our community. And we want to thank each and every one of them for all that they do. We have a letter signed by the mayor and the city council for all of you, and after your brief introduction of your program, we would like to invite you and all of the scouts to come up, and Patty Jo Medina, I know you're a part of this troop as well, to come up, and we'd like to take a picture together for our website and the newspaper, if you can.
We, all of us collectively represent Cub Scout PACs 519 and 520. We plan and carry out weekly den meetings, which teach skills to our eight-to-ten-year-old boys. And then once a month, we have what's called a PAC meeting. All of these meetings revolve around a theme, and this month, the theme is being good citizens in our community. And it culminates, at the end of the month, with, our PAC meeting will be a mock city council meeting. So they're going to get to experience a little bit of what you do. We try to teach the characteristics that are outlined in the Boy Scout law, and I appreciate very much tonight you reminding the boys to be helpful in their community, and to be brave, to stand up for what is right. Those are two of the points of the Scout law that we emphasize in our teachings. And I'd like to introduce you to Levi Pollard, he is a Weebloos Den Leader. That's the ten-year-old boys. Alan Stark is a Bears Den Leader, that's the nine-year-old boys. Jeff Nutting is a Wolf Den Leader for the eight-year-old boys. And Patty Jo Medina is one of our committee chairpersons. I'm the PAC, the Cub Master, so I just kind, I plan the PAC meetings, it's my main, my main job.
Okay, thank you so much. So should we have the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts come up front, please?
It's a poor...
I was wondering what's going on.
Ma'am, did you want to speak? You tried to come up earlier. Just a minute or two, we can do that.
I am Joan Cash, and I work with the prison system. I've never been to one of these meetings before, so I was really impressed and excited to be able to stop in here. I don't know who does what, when, where, why, full-time, part-time, so I'm really pleased to be able to be here. The one question that I have as a citizen of Canyon City that kind of bothers me, I don't know where to go with it, how do you choose which roads you're gonna repair?
They are rated. There is a list of, from our city engineer, that rated them, which ones we start first, and we do have that list, and that's how they did it, the ones in the worst case. Pardon? Is that correct?
Yep.
There's a list online of the top twenty worst streets, and it's, as far as the ones that we'll conquer, if the number two A gets passed, we'll take a selection from that list where every section of town will benefit from getting their streets fixed, based on the rating of how bad the street is.
Okay, thank you.
That's online, thank you. Then I'd like to call to order the regular council meeting, so, first Tuesday, December the sixth, two thousand and sixteen. Could we have the Boys and, Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts come up front and lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please? Please rise.
Join us in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Scouts dismissed. Please be seated.
Well, thank you. We knew exactly what to do, so... Okay, would you call a roll, please?
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Council members, Smith.
Here.
Ekstrom.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
And Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Gill is excused, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to call for approval of the minutes for the August the fifteenth regular city council meeting, and August seventeenth Public Works Committee meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Mr. Meisner?
Pause.
Mr. Meisner?
If you look at the committee minutes, item one, the last sentence, and this is regards to the discussion we had in terms of the incentive program, it's just a minor correction, it says that all parties were pleased, most of the parties were pleased. It wasn't our majority, or something. We did have one or two individuals that was not pleased with that decision, but it's minor, but it wasn't all. And I commend council for working with that whole process, it was a challenge.
Are there any other corrections to any of those minutes? Mr. Meisner?
No, I'm not, no, I'm not.
Oh, what?
I'm gonna move to approve them. Go ahead.
Could I have a motion from council in a second? So Mr. Meisner approved?
My move that we approve the minutes from the eight-fifteen regular council meeting, and the amended minutes from the eight-seventeen Public Works Committee meeting.
And Councilperson Schumacher second, correct. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Are there any council member announcements? Mr. Weed?
Yes, we will be having a General Government Committee meeting tomorrow at four o'clock in the adjoining room.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, just for your reference, council members, over here on this side of the podium or little fence area are the yard signs for the street ballot issue, and I hope that you all go home with a couple of yard signs and post them for the community. And if you need more, have more. And so we appreciate that support. Our street committee's been working really hard, and they're really gung-ho, this is a big month that they're pushing out, to educate our citizens about the street issues. And we have found that there's a lot of our citizenry that have ideas about what's going on with streets, and it's based on false information. And so it's really important that we do a lot of education and promotion of what the facts are. And a lot of those documentations, and studies, and facts, and pictures, and all sorts of things in the ballot issue can be found on the city website. If you go to the main page, you go to the main page, canyoncity.org, you go down and scroll through the tabs, and there's one called Streets. And that Street tab will have lots of documentation information for you to study the issue for yourself.
And there are extra signs at the Chamber of Commerce, is that right?
Yes, anybody can get signs from the Chamber of Commerce as well.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would like to invite everybody to listen to Ms. Ashley Smith and our mayor, Preston Troutman, on newsline tomorrow morning at eight-thirty. They'll be presenting some questions on two A, remember that number, two A.
And hopefully, some people will call in with their questions, and hopefully, we can have some answers for them.
And be a part of the communication.
And that's at eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty Wednesday morning tomorrow.
Caroline, fourteen-hundred.
Mm-hmm.
I could have been a radio announcer. Caroline, fourteen-hundred. Okay. Well, since our last meeting, or some time ago, actually, August eighteenth, I attended a CML, which is Colora Municipal League Meeting, for small mayors. I mean, small...
Small.
Small cities, thank you. Oh, dear. Veridically channeled, but for small cities. And there was about seventy of us there, and it was quite extensive and very interesting as they talked around the table of what was going on in a lot of these small towns. There's a lot going on that we probably need to talk about in Canyon City and what they had going. And I will have a rendition right up for all of you, and I suppose I thanked the city for sending me there. It was second, that's the second time I have gone to a meeting like that. That's very good, so... Are there any other announcements from city council? Then I have a proclamation here for, proclamation for the Canyon City First United Methodist Church, it's a hundred-and-fifty-year-old anniversary of the church, and it's been in the ministry for a hundred-and-fifty years, and that's going to occur on, in this month, the month of September, and I have the proclamation here. Go ahead. Is that correct?
You'll be presenting it.
And I will be presenting it on the seventeenth or eighteenth next week. Okay? So I'll be presenting it, and we'll be giving them this proclamation, so... And that is the First, Canyon City First United Methodist Church. And we celebrate that with them for the month of September. And the next point is, I won't, going to appoint myself, since it is a memorial appointment, to become the community agency, to be on the community agency committee. That is the committee that gives out donations that are asked for by various civic groups and everything. So I will be on that committee. Okay? Also, I ask for adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Could you review that consent agenda, Tony?
Yes, Mayor. Four A would authorize a fifty-dollar annual increase to the employee's safety shoe allowance, not to exceed two-hundred dollars. That's the first increase since two thousand. Four B would authorize street closure on Skyline Drive from three to nine P.M. on September tenth for the Gold Belt Scenic Byway Hogback Twilight Challenge. It's a nice, long title. Four C would authorize a temporary street closure at North Fifth between Main and Macon on September twenty-fourth from six A.M. to ten P.M. for the Fremont Adventure Recreation Bikes and Brews Event. So hopefully, people will get in shape for that. Four D would authorize temporary street closure on Skyline Drive from ten A.M. to eleven A.M. on September tenth for the Fremont Community Foundation's John Wells Toy Run. And also authorize temporary street closure on four E on Main between sixth and seventh on September tenth, again, for the John Wells Toy Run, and that would be from eight A.M. to eight P.M. Four F would authorize the city administrator to execute an intergovernment agreement with Fremont County to install a water meter data collection platform on the roof of the Fremont County Judicial Complex. That's to read everyone's water meters. Four G would ratify an emergency repair of the Seehall's air conditioning system chiller to American Mechanical Services in amount not to exceed sixteen thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars. And four F are a series of bids, the first one being the Rudd House roof replacement and chimney fix to IHS Colorado in amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and thirty cents. The next bid is to acquire three Toro mowers for the Parks Department from Craig's Power Equipment at a cost of forty thousand and thirty-five thousand dollars. And finally, to purchase twenty thousand pounds of sodium chloride for the Water Department that's for water treatment from E.OQ water technologies in the amount of thirteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Are there any additions or corrections, any questions?
Mayor, I have a question, because I hadn't heard about this emergency repair for the HVAC system.
Yes. Yes. Well, they discovered a year ago a potential problem, but unfortunately, it wasn't addressed. And so, the problem became worse, and now there's leaks. And the, of course, the materials that are leaking out of there are not good for the environment, so it's an issue that we have to correct immediately. And so, that's why it's an emergency contract to repair.
Questions on that? Hearing none. Yes, ma'am.
I'd have one more question. Are we on our agenda choosing people for the marijuana task force tonight? Or is that tomorrow?
No. No, I think we've just provided you the people have demonstrated interest, and that's not scheduled till September the nineteenth.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the agenda and the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Could you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, could we have the administrators' report? Tony, do you have anything?
Just that the citizen survey results should be coming to us in about two weeks. In the interim, we want to encourage people to take advantage of the online survey. Over four hundred people took that in the first week it was available. That was of August twentieth. So, just in the first week alone, four hundred people took the online survey, even though it's not the scientific formal survey, unlike the one that was mailed to people's homes. It is important data and the voice of the community that we can compare with the official survey. So, we really encourage people to take that survey who may not have received. Only about one out of every eight households receive the mail survey. So, everyone else should take advantage of the online survey. And that will be available until September twentieth. So, please take advantage of that. You can get access to it to the city's website and also through the newspaper.
We had on the mail-out survey, there were fifteen hundred mailed out. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you have an idea how many may have come back?
They have received almost six hundred. So, right now, last time I spoke, a thirty-seven percent response rate, which based upon the national response rate for this survey is very high.
Very good. Okay. Is that it? Thank you. Do we have any citizen requests to speak to council?
We have no written requests to speak to council, particularly on an item that's not already on the agenda.
Okay. Guess we've talked them all out, huh? All right.
Thanks. Kathy, I know there's a citizen that wants to address city council. Can they fill out a slip and submit that? So, if you want to fill out a slip and just let me fill it out, just an address. There's a sheet of paper on that little table over there.
Just go ahead and speak to council, and then just make sure you fill it out and get it to me before you leave. Okay?
Would you give us your name and address, please?
I'm Colin Drexler. I live on forty-five Primos Court. Been a resident here for a little over seven years. And I got an issue with Forge Road. When you first enter it, you have a little community with duplexes and stuff like that, which is well-lit. Thirty miles an hour right there, wide road. Then after you make the first curve, it goes up to forty miles an hour. And all the way down, there's no lighting. Public safety and safety of our families and ourselves for all the wildlife across the street that we be a good idea to have lighting put up. I have some pictures of power poles and lines already set up on the east and west side, and they stop at the corner at the double S turn before Dawson Ranch. Wondering if the power lines or the power poles can be used to mount the lighting. We need to have the protection and more safety of the community. Last Saturday, Saturday before last, I did hit it here, and I never know what it knew what a traumatic experience it was. And besides the damages to my car, it is like human safety and public, family, relatives, friends coming up the hill. I see it happen all the time. And I got pictures taken during the daytime showing how close the wildlife is to the road. Power lines to the west and east side.
Okay. Sure. Bring them up. Yeah, Tony, I had just mentioned that we'll explore the costs and bring them back to council for our consideration, if that's okay?
Pass these around, and then they'll be put into the record for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, let's move on to ordinance number thirteen, series two, series of two thousand and sixteen. It's an ordinance appropriating additional sums of money for Greenwood Secondary. Clark, Kathy, would you read the title, please, by title?
This is the bill for ordinance number thirteen, series of two thousand and sixteen, and ordinance appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenses in excess of amounts budgeted for the city of Canyon City, Colorado for the two thousand and sixteen budget year.
Okay, have a motion and second from council? Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number thirteen, series of two thousand and sixteen, on second reading.
Second.
Miss second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Would you call a roll, please?
Member Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna open a public hearing for application of a special event liquor permit for Fremont Community Foundation. So, the public hearing is hereby open. Could I have a report from city clerk, please?
Representing the organization who's applied for a special event liquor permit for September tenth for the six hundred block of Main Street and the two hundred block of North Seventh Street for their annual toy run. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting the location near the site, more specifically in the window of the pantry. The event requires bike participants to bring a toy to enter the run, and all toys will be given to the Department of Human Services to be distributed at the Christmas to underprivileged kids of Fremont County. The event will also include bands, motorcycle, rodeo, and other games for the public to participate in. Food will be offered from area restaurants. Individuals twenty-one and up will receive a wristband and black X's on each of the hands of those underage. Volunteers from this organization has attended training given by the city and will be patrolling the perimeter and watching for underage and over-intoxicated drinking. Upon review of the application, appropriate fees have been submitted. The diagram meets filing requirements applicant has applied for and just currently tonight obtained a street closure permit, and the corporation is in good standing with the Secretary of State. So, with that, I give you any questions you have, may have of Mr. Brown.
Okay, are there any questions of the applicant? Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Dan. Good to see you again.
Hello, Mr. Weed.
You guys work hard. We see you pretty regularly.
Yeah, it seems like it.
Are you familiar with the Colorado? Are you still familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes.
And do you still have a copy of it?
Yes, we do.
Okay. How many volunteers are you planning to have for this?
For this event, there'll only be five of us.
And how are those five people trained?
Well, we have all been to the tips class through the city.
No big surprise there. Are you fully aware that you're responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and your organization and affect future licensing?
Yes, we're all aware of that. The whole board's aware of that.
Figured you were. Want to tell us anything else about your event?
Sure. This thing started at the Belvedere Blues Fest back in two thousand and two. It was Eddie Osola Toy Run. And Eddie was a friend of John Wells. A few years later, John passed away, and we decided to change it to the John Wells Memorial. This is the fourth, fourteenth year we've done the toy run. It's only the fifth year that we call it the John Wells Memorial Toy Run. It does benefit social services. Everyone has to bring a toy that participates. And then, right before Christmas, usually the Sunday before Christmas, we have a car that we throw all the toys in, which is a limo that you guys have probably seen around on occasion. And someone dresses up as the Grinch, and we actually deliver the toys to a handful of houses. You know, DHS gives us some families that they think really deserve it, and we load up bags of toys and deliver it. And it's quite an event.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Weed. Are there any further questions from anybody on council at this time? But the Grinch will be there. Is that what you're saying? The Grinch will be attending?
We'll see. Hopefully, it's kind of hard to ride a motorcycle with the Grinch stuff on.
How about him running the race? Will he do that?
I don't know. He's kind of out of shape, I've noticed.
Are there any comments from the audience? Okay. Thank you. So, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and have a motion and a second from council.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the application for a special event liquor permit for Fremont Community Foundation for their event on September tenth.
Ms. Schumacher, second?
Second.
Ms. Schumacher, second. Are there any discussions on the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Aye. Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, Part nine A, a public hearing for Dozier Avenue Segment Annexation. I'd like to open a public hearing for that. Could we have a report from the city engineer? Mr. Lancaster?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This annexation is a road annexation only. It's only for a portion of right-of-way that's currently controlled by the county. The reason, the two main reasons we are looking at annexing this, so this petition is city-driven, city staff-driven, and is, two reasons are continuity services in that area and also control of the gateway as contemplated within the US-50 Corridor Plan that we've adopted. With the work that's being done in the US-50 Dozier intersection and the construction of the roundabout there at that location, we consider it a strategic place for placemaking and control as far as the US-50 Corridor and the way it looks and how it's managed. And so, this is a short segment of Dozier, essentially from US-50 up to the first Glenmore Road or just before you get to the first entrance of Walmart. So, those are the primary reasons for the annexation. And if you have any legal questions, I guess those are for John.
Thank you, Mr. Lancaster. He's putting his glasses on, apparently. Mr. Hazen has, Havens has a comment.
All the better to see you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm thrilled.
This annexation does comply with statutory requirements, and it is eligible for annexation. So, you may so find if you wish. And if you do adopt a resolution, then you can move right on to the ordinance actually annexing the property.
Thank you, Mr. Havens. Kathy?
I just want to note that all notices have been fulfilled and have not been any comments received by the clerk's office.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council at this time?
I'm just curious, does the county or does somebody have to approve being annexed, or is this?
Yes, the county was actually asked, and they signed a letter in support of the annexation.
They were on the list.
And I think they signed the petition as well, yeah.
And this, I'm guessing this is just the eastern half of Dozier in that section?
No, it's the entire width of the right-of-way.
Okay.
Must have been gone when we talked about this first time, kind of in a committee or somewhere.
Must have been. Physically or mentally? Either way, I was gone.
If you two are done, I'll continue. So, thank you. Are there any comments from the audience at this time? Would I step up and make a comment? Well, hearing none. I'd like to close the public hearing. And do we, do we vote on this, or? Oh, there it is. I should put my glasses on. Thank you. Okay, then. Nine B is Resolution Number twenty, series two thousand and sixteen, a finding for parcel eligible for annexation. I need a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I move that we approve Resolution Number twenty, series of two thousand and sixteen.
Second? Mr. Meisner? Are there any discussions on the motion? Could we have a roll call vote, then?
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, ordinance number fourteen, a series of two thousand and sixteen, annexation of property into city limits. I will need three to introduce. Mr. Meisner, Ms. Smith, Mr. Weed. Clerk, could you read by title, please?
Bill for ordinance number fourteen, series of two thousand and sixteen, and ordinance annexing certain unincorporated lands commonly known as a Dozier Avenue Segment Annexation to the city of Canyon City, Colorado.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve ordinance number fourteen, series of two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Who's second?
On first reading.
Mr. Ekstrom, did you, was that you?
I was just clarifying that it's a first reading. Yes, but I seconded it.
Oh, okay. Is there any discussion on the question, on the motion? Shall I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Very good. Thank you. Number ten is bid number thirty-six to sixteen. It's downtown alley, downtown alley reconstruction. Could we have a report from Mr. Lancaster? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This bid is for the reconstruction of the alleyways north of Main Street between the six hundred, or Sixth Street and Eighth Street, six hundred and seven hundred block. Essentially, we already budgeted a hundred thousand this year for alley reconstruction. And part of this was us fulfilling our promise in the downtown strategic plan and the Main Street improvements. In the narrow end of the street, there was some concern about delivery trucks and where some of that may happen since we've eliminated the center lane. One of these alleys, the six hundred block in particular has been, the plans have been in the drawer for probably ten years now at this time. So, we've had complaints about the alleys in this area for a long time, and they are the worst. And because we've eliminated a number of other street projects this year that you guys reprioritized some of those funds, we have enough money to do two alleys this year instead of just the one. So, that's why we went ahead and put out the two worst ones out to bid. We got two bids, and the low bid was from Avalanche Excavating in the amount of a hundred and forty-seven thousand thirty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. So, city engineering department is recommending awards to Avalanche Excavating with a ten percent contingency for a grand total of a hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and eleven cents. And if we get started soon, this project should be complete before Thanksgiving.
Wow. Thank you, Mr. Lancaster. Are there any questions from council?
I have a question. Will we continue to fix the alleys each year? We take a block?
Well, you'd see in our, in the proposed capital improvement plan that we've presented to you so far to date, you know, until the budget's adopted, we have put in an additional hundred thousand dollars a year annually for this.
So, you think that that would take like two blocks, a hundred thousand?
A hundred thousand, you know, if we go off this year's bid, it's not gonna do two blocks, but it would do one. There's some economics there. The more we bid out and less impact, of course, to the businesses. So, we can discuss that more as we go forward, but we are budgeting for it.
Great.
Just to be clear, this is not funds that would be coming annually from the street tax if it passes?
No.
Okay. I knew the answer. I just wanted to be clear.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weed. Could I have a motion and second on the other questions, comments? Could I have a motion and second then from council?
Mayor.
Ekstrom?
Thank you. Council, I recommend that we approve bid number thirty-six to sixteen for the downtown alley construction at, on the, you said the six and seven hundred blocks. Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Weed, second. Any discussion on the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Exstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Number eleven A is public hearing for zoning code amendment. This is miscellaneous housekeeping, and therefore I am opening the public hearing right now. Could I have a report from city planner? Hi, Terry.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is a public hearing for zoning code amendment. Housekeeping items the city initiated. Public notice was published as required by law, and the planning commission considered this application at their regular meeting on August sixteenth. The revisions that you'll find in your staff report are to Title seventeen, and they are to correct, clarify, and basically obtain consistency in the regulations, and we don't consider those to, any of these, to be necessarily substantive. Rather than go through each one of these, I will open it up to questions if you have any. Most of these are corrections, like I said, and clarifications. We did publish this on or before August twenty-second. For this hearing, there have been no responses to that notice, and you'll find an excerpt from the planning commission meeting in your packet. Their findings affect in their advisory report recommending approval, and a bill for ordinance also recommending approval. Any questions I can answer for you? I'd be happy to do so.
Yeah, I've got one. Yeah, it's on the third page, I guess. It's seventeen twenty-four oh two oh. The term, maybe this is just me, the terminology, "The city planner will notify such owners of budding properties located within three hundred feet." Is a budding the right word? I thought a budding meant touching. Shouldn't it just say the owners of properties located within three hundred feet? Because...
That does sound more accurate. I can certainly change that.
It's, yeah, a budding, to me anyhow, that just means adjacent properties.
Yes, sir. I'll change that.
I would suggest to remove the word.
City attorney agrees.
Okay. So it just says, "The owners of properties located within three hundred."
Just remove the word a budding.
Yeah. That's the only comment I had.
Are there any comments?
I'm impressed that he found that. Thank you. Good to know that someone's reading all that. My only other question for Terry is, of course, planning commission, these are all recommendations from the planning commission, and there, I didn't see any minutes, but there were no objections.
There weren't, and I do believe there are minutes right at the end of Appendix G, which came out of the building code.
Okay.
They did have some questions, but they did not have any objections.
Thank you.
I am curious on seventeen twenty and swimming pools, why it was strike out to have a surrounding fencing, lock gate, self-locking gates?
The reason is that we are going to refer people to the building code rather than have this in the zoning code. The swimming pools are not, private swimming pools are not regulated by the Colorado Department of Health as they may have been back when this was originally written. And because there's a conflict between what we recommend or require in the zoning code and what's required in the building code, we decided to opt for one, and the one that we staff recommends is the building code. And it does require fencing, and it does require gate latches.
Are there any questions of council? Excellent questions. Are there comments from the audience? Are there any further discussion from council? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Eleven A is ordinance number fifteen, series two thousand and sixteen. I need three to introduce. Ms. Smith, Mr. Meisner, Mr. Exstrom. Clerk, could you read by title?
This is a bill for ordinance number fifteen, series of two thousand and sixteen, and ordinance amending various sections of Title seventeen of the Canyon City Municipal Code to correct errors and inconsistencies within the code.
Is there a motion and a second from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Exstrom?
Thank you. I move that council approve ordinance number fifteen, series of two thousand and sixteen on first reading.
Schumacher? Sorry, I should've waited two seconds. Sorry. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Would you call the roll, please?
For Exstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just ask Terry to express our thanks to the planning commission for the time that they spent on these items?
I will do so.
Thank you, Terry. And Ms. Schumacher, I did that because I knew you were just itching to second something. I could see that over there, so, just saying.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, number twelve. Ordinance number sixteen, series two thousand sixteen on first reading. It's an ordinance amending Chapter three point five zero, providing for the sunset to the city's economic incentive program. I need three to introduce. Scott, Mr. Exstrom, Mr. Meisner. Mr. Weed, thank you. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number sixteen, series of two thousand and sixteen, and ordinance amending Chapter three point five oh to provide for the sunset of the city's economic development incentive program.
Could we have a report from city administrator, please?
Yes, this is a program that was initiated for good cause back in two thousand and fourteen to try to stimulate the economy through providing deferral of building permit fees, use taxes, and sales taxes. But in investigating the program after two and a half years, it appears that the city was able to achieve as much economic development stimulus in the years prior to the program versus when the program was in effect. So, given that, the staff had recommended at the committee level to discontinue the program, and I think there was a reasonable compromise reach where it would be required that the agreements and the building permits would have to be executed by December thirty-first of this year to take advantage of the program, and COs would have to be completed or certificates of occupancy by December thirty-first of two thousand and seventeen.
Eighteen.
Seventeen.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
City attorney might want to add.
Let me just add a little. I know when we in committee had the discussion, and I was given my directive to prepare the ordinance, we talked about building permits. Building permits in the agreements, and you've got a copy of the agreement, are issued simultaneously throughout the administration of this program. The reason I used agreement rather than building permit in some of the text of the ordinance is that the agreement contains a promise by the party who qualifies for deferment of tap fees and building permit fees and relief with respect to the prepayment of use taxes, to agree that if the project is not completed by December thirty-one of two thousand and eighteen, those amounts will be paid to the city. And that seemed to me to be an important thing to make clear in the ordinance. The building permit has to be applied for, and basically calculations have to be made as to the cost of a water tap, the cost of building permit fees, which are based upon the cost of the project. And so, to the extent any of you were wondering, the agreement to me seemed as essential as the building permit in terms of getting it into the ordinance announcing this sunset.
Thank you, Mr. Haves. Any other questions?
Just for the verbal record, he mentioned two thousand and eighteen. That should be two thousand and seventeen.
Well, two dates that are important. They're both December thirty-first dates. December thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen, or two thousand and sixteen. You're right. That's the deadline for applying for participation in the program, and as Councilman Meisner pointed out, the entire program will be over December thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen, for anyone who qualified for a deferral.
Yes, there are certain things you should listen to the mayor on and certain things you shouldn't. That was one of them. Don't listen to him. It was seventeen, not eighteen, so.
Confuse the attorney.
I blame that one on myself.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
That was tough. All right. Are there any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Could I have a motion and a second? Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I make the motion to approve ordinance number sixteen, series of two thousand and sixteen on first reading.
Schumacher, second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Exstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Okay, number thirteen is ordinance number seventeen, series two thousand and sixteen. This is first reading. An ordinance adding a new section to the municipal code providing for criminal justice surcharges. I need three to introduce. Exstrom, Ms. Schumacher, and Mr. Weed. Thank you. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance seventeen, series of two thousand and sixteen, and ordinance amending Chapter one point one six of the Canyon City Municipal Code to provide for the assessment of a community justice surcharge against those convicted of violating city ordinances.
Could I have a report from city administrator, please?
Yes, council, this is a matter recommended by Judge Allen and Police Chief Schultz regarding consideration of a fifteen-dollar criminal justice surcharge. In addition to existing surcharges, and all convictions are pleas of no contest in the municipal court, these funds would be approximately twenty thousand dollars, and as we've discussed at the committee level, they would be earmarked for two purposes: crime prevention and community events. And some of the examples for crime prevention would be the Crime Free Multi-Housing Program, the At-Risk Mentoring Program, the Boys and Girls Club, Substance Abuse Education, and for the community events, the National Night Out, and the Junior Police Academy, and Shop with a Cop. So those are examples of what programs would be supported by this potential surcharge.
Mr. Haves?
Now, the thing to point out that happened between the last council discussion and the drafting of the ordinance, I went to the chief of police as I was putting the wording together for this ordinance, and asked him whether he really wanted to use the term criminal justice surcharge or community justice surcharge, and the chief favored "community", which to me sounded better. Criminal justice sort of categorizes the surcharge to maybe a narrower brand of uses. So in the ordinance, you'll find the term "community justice surcharge," which is the title preferred by the chief of police and by the city attorney for that matter.
Okay, is that okay, everybody? Okay, sounds fine. Any other questions from council? Could I have a motion from council in a second?
Mayor?
Ms. Smith?
I move that we adopt ordinance number seventeen, two thousand and sixteen, with the change of a community justice surcharge wording for the first reading.
Thank you, a second?
A second.
Mr. Exstrom, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Member Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Exstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
No.
Approved by majority vote.
Okay, is there anything else from council that we'd like to discuss at this time?
Just remember your signs on the way out.
That's a good sign.
Just one thing. We want to thank Kathy for putting together your new agenda book. And Kathy, do you want?
Thank you, Tony, for the great idea.
Do you want the council members to leave this at the dais?
If you can leave the book and any of the contents you don't want in the book and leave it here. Also note on the left-hand side, you'll need to take your committee packet and your letters with you for the meeting tomorrow. Have any other suggestions? I've received a few suggestions of what may be added to that, and so it's gonna be just kind of a work in progress, but I think it's gonna make it a lot easier for people that have, I'm gonna be the only one with loose paper up here, it looks like.
And, Mr. Administrator, the dais is like here? The dais, you said, leave them on the dais. Did you say that? Is that here? Okay. I'm just kidding.
Are there any other diasses?
I don't know.
There's a.
Durn.